I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being televised through Watertown Cable Access, and it's available by Zoom and by telephone. And the meeting information is available online. If you go to the website, the town's website, you can get all the information you need to join the meeting when we come back. So can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Gannon.
He may be in the executive session, so we will count him when we get there.
Uh, Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes, present.
Councilor Baze?
Present.
Councilor Donato?
Present.
Councilor Feltna?
Present.
President Sedaris.
Present. Can I get a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Manager Michael Driscoll? They'll move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Baze?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Feltna?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, we will be returning to open session somewhere around 7 o'clock. So everybody log out and go to the executive session. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. The next item we have on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. And we do have one hand raised. I will recognize first Mary Russo. Mary, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, yes.
My hand is not raised.
It was from the beginning, sorry. Okay, thank you.
It says lowered hand. Okay, thank you.
Rebecca Kerr, please give me your name and address, and you are allowed to speak.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Kerr. My address is 222 Main Street, Watertown.
Thank you.
I'm here today to speak on behalf of a group of Watertown residents who frequent How Dog Park, Unpleasant, and Bacon Street. We would like to submit a petition to the Town Council for consideration to make small upgrades and provide regular maintenance to the off-leash dog area. As a brief summary, the park gets crowded during peak hours. The enclosed area is on the small side for a popular dog park. We are proposing on the petition that we fenced in area, we expanded out to include a similar-sized portion of the adjacent grassy field, which is rarely used and goes underutilized. Regarding the park upkeep, the current surface has not been properly maintained since its installation in 2018, and it's unsanitary and unhealthy for our dogs in the current state. It is generally advised that the surface should be cleaned, refreshed, or replaced every one to two years. In addition, there are no lights in the park, and when it gets dark by 4, 5 o'clock in the afternoon these days, people are having difficulties navigating around the park. This is a hazard and has caused several minor incidents during these times. A water source would be a wonderful addition to the park. There's one in Philippi Dog Park, and we feel that How Park would benefit great from one, too. There are other small issues in this petitions, like tree trimming, wasp nest removal, other regular upkeep concerns that we'd like to include in the maintenance schedule for these facilities. This petition is important to a lot of Watertown neighbors, and it would require a very small fraction of your time and body commitment. We will formally submit the petition by email with the minimum required number of supporting signatures according to the town charter, and we will greatly appreciate your consideration on this matter. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to getting that petition.
Thank you.
Yes. Let me just, for the record, Marilin, make sure that John Gannon is recorded as present.
Yes.
Is there anyone else in the public forum that wishes to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. The next item is the examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes as been revised as of today?
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of November 10th as revised today.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Baze?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Feltna?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is President's Report. I have two items. First, a request from the Charter Review Committee for an extension to continue the review until June 30th, 2021. According to the town charter, the Charter Review Committee, which meets in the year ending in zero, should have completed their work by the end of the year, given the COVID restrictions and everything that happened with the pandemic. We are running behind, and at the last meeting of the Charter Committee, a vote was taken unanimously passed to request the Town Council to extend the work until June 30th, 2021. So I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
So a motion to extend the Charter Review Committee to June 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Feltna?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Baze?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item is a statement on racism, but I think it's... My statement has evolved into a proclamation because I think it's important. Given my role on the school committee and the Town Council, I just want to briefly touch on... There's an issue, an alleged issue at the middle school, which we're going to get a referral later on this evening. And the school department and the school committee and the superintendent and her staff have been working very hard to try to address this issue. And at the meeting last night, there were statements made that I forwarded to the council from the superintendent and by the school committee chair. And I think it's important that I notify the council that I did commit as the liaison between the two committees that I would do whatever I could do to make sure that the council and the town was willing to be a participant in helping to solve these issues that continue to come up that we can't seem to find, you know, we can't seem to find a way to stop them, but we're going to try to do our best to do that. You know, there is also going to be a policy subcommittee of the council of the school committee next week, and they're going to come up with a citizen advisory board to advise the school committee on some of these issues. And they're going to have mostly parents as part of this that have been affected or their children have been affected. But I think it's broader than that, and I think that we, as a community, need to make a statement. And again, I'm offering something this evening as a starting point, and I'm hoping that the council will support this or do something, you know, if they want to do something different, that's fine. But I want to take the opportunity to read this, if you don't mind. Whereas, the motto of the town of Watertown is "In Pace Convida," founded in peace. And whereas, since our founding in 1630, every generation has struggled to address in their own way what diversity means and how Watertown, with its diverse population, can live in peace and harmony. And Watertown has, over its 390-year history, strived to be a community where all are welcomed and accepted. And whereas, in 2016, the Watertown Public Schools and the Watertown Police Department collaborated with the world in Watertown to invite Dr. Bernard Lafayette, an associate of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., to provide training on the Kengan Principles of Nonviolent Conflict Reconciliation. And whereas, the Watertown Public Schools have embraced a variety of actions to combat racism and bullying, including integrating Kengan initiatives into its curriculum, establishing an anti-bias coalition, create a bullying prevention plan advisory team, and are reviewing current policies regarding bullying, bullying and harassment and how they are enforced. And whereas, we have made efforts to address these issues, we have not done enough. And whereas, on November 12th, 2020, we saw a news report concerning allegations of race-based bullying and harassment of a Watertown middle school student, which included defacing her home. And whereas, at a school department forum on December 3rd, 2020, attended by more than 150 people, we heard from parents of children of color, who make up 30% of our student population, speak about the racial bullying that their children are reporting is continuing to occur in our schools. And whereas, we have fallen short of our goal to create an environment where all students feel accepted and included. Whereas, we, as residents of Watertown, are heartbroken to hear reports that children in our community are subject to such treatment, and as leaders of Watertown, we are obligated to take an active role in combating these issues. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council opposes racism and bullying in any form and believes that all people who live, work, or visit Watertown deserve to be treated with dignity and respect and live in peace. Be it further proclaimed that at its November 24th meeting, the Town Council voted unanimously to explore issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion within Watertown government and determine what steps need to be taken; two, that the Town Council respects the authority of the school committee over policy and management of the Watertown Public Schools, and offers to work jointly with the school committee to combat racism and bullying in our community in a comprehensive manner; and three, that the Town Council asks each resident of Watertown to join the efforts against racism and bullying in our community. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand because the great seal of the town of Watertown to be affixed on this eighth day of December, 2020. I just want to also say that I did have several conversations with the superintendent on this, and she helped edit a couple of these things, and she was comfortable with the wording. And I also want to thank Councilor Picciarelli, who also helped me with some of the edits. So again, I'm offering this this evening, and, you know, I'd like to have some conversation, if possible. So before we do that, can I get a motion to at least put it on the floor?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Feltna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just extend thanks for your work on this and the leadership. And I know people would appreciate more input, but I think, given the timeliness and the need to address quickly, it's great, all your work with the school department and others and Councilor Picciarelli. And I do endorse this proclamation, and it was very upsetting for me to hear the stories and see that much pain in the recent community forum for the schools. So I appreciate everyone's efforts, and I hope that all the citizens of Watertown do join us in our efforts to solve these problems and work towards peace in living with one another.
Thank you. Councilor Canelas.
Thank you. Thank you to one and all for all of your efforts in bringing a statement of this sort to fruition. I think it's important that the Town Council take a position, and this is an excellent statement to be brought forward. So thank you very much for taking the initiative to make it happen.
Councilor Baze, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I also wanted to just say thank you for including us in this because even though the forum on the third was about the schools, we are not immune to the same issues and the same problems. And, you know, I hope that we are going to be addressing those. I was going to announce later tonight that we have our first meeting to address at least a portion of it in terms of our employment and diversity and equity and our employment on the 21st at 7:30. So we're going to start doing that. And I just want to assure people we know that this is a town-wide, statewide, nationwide problem, but we need to do what we can in our town to affect change. So thank you.
Councilor Palumbo.
Thank you. I do also want to extend my appreciation to you, Council President Sedaris, for making, drafting this and making a public statement regarding the council. I think it's important that the Town Council address the issue of racism and bullying and knowing, of course, that the school, the district has a primary responsibility. But I think, as elected officials, we all have a responsibility to be clear about what we feel about these issues and how strongly we feel. And I think your statement does a wonderful job of making it clear that we want to work with the school committee and with the other members of the community to address the issues of racism.
Thank you. Councilor Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also want to endorse the statements put together by yourself and with the help of others, Mr. President, and anyone who attended the school department forum last week would come away with a, you know, shock and a need, realization of the need to address these issues head-on. As others stated, it's not a Watertown-only problem. It's systemic. And there's a lot Watertown can do to assist the school committee and act as a larger effort in preventing our children from being bullied and harassed as well and welcoming all members of Watertown into the, all aspects of life in Watertown. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Councilor Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, will be supporting the proclamation this evening. I think to some of the points made by other councilors, if people didn't have a chance to watch, to attend that forum, you know, I would suggest taking the time to watch the video feedback. I think when you hear just the raw emotion that was expressed by many parents and, you know, it really brings to the forefront that this is an issue that needs to be addressed head-on. And I'm happy to see that both the whole committee as well as the Town Council will be tackling this issue together in hopes of trying to find a way to address any of these concerns.
As I said earlier, I think it's important that we... We're a community. It's not just the schools. We support the schools. But we're a community. We want to do this as a... It's kind of as, in the conversation that I've had with the superintendent today, we're doing this as a team. The superintendent is going to great lengths to address these things. Even, you know, in today's conversation, she's going to be hiring a diversity... Or I don't know exactly what she's going to call that person. She's going to great lengths, and the school committee is going to great lengths. And I do think that we should be partners with that because it's not just the schools. It's everywhere. And I think we're... Thank you. And I appreciate everybody's support so far. And I think it's a strong statement that we make as a council. So can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Feltna?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon? Councilor Canelas?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Baze?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is motions, orders, and resolutions. And 8A is a first reading on a proposed loan order authorizing the town treasurer, with the approval of the town manager, to borrow and/or expend monies in the amount of $1,771,000 under Mass General Lodge at the 44, subsection 7-1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority for the purpose of paying costs of townwide radio infrastructure improvements. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Town Council, as you just indicated, tonight's a first reading. There would be an advertisement by the council clerk on a public hearing in consideration by this proposed loan order five weeks from today, on January 12th, 2021. Just by way of background, as you recall, it stated in the June 8th budget message for the fiscal year 2021. It was my intention to bring forward proposed loan orders for various capital equipment items contained in the fiscal year 2021 Capital Improvement Program. The acquisition of these proposed items is consistent with the town's priorities of not deferring maintenance and our recognition of cost of capital equipment facilities or infrastructure to future years. As a follow-up to that, there was a joint memorandum from Fire Chief Robert J. Quinn, Police Chief Michael P. Lawn, and Mr. Thomas J. Tracy, the Town Auditor, Assistant Town Manager of Finance, regarding the need to move forward with the townwide radio and infrastructure. Mr. President, the members of the council, the proposed loan order would total the $1,771,000. There'll be a full presentation by the consultant that has been working with the two public safety chiefs and other folks on the administration. So again, Mr. President, it's a first reading. There'd be a public hearing in consideration at the January 12th Town, January 12th, 2021 Town Council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The next item is 8B, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $103,000 from the fiscal year 2021 debt retirement authorized unissued account to the fiscal year 2021 transfer to Capital Projects School account in order to move forward with the remodeling of six middle school bathrooms. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, just as you recall, back on February 4th, 2020, the proposed fiscal year 2021 to 2025 Capital Improvement Program was submitted pursuant to the provisions of the Watertown Home Rule Charter and the Town Council Resolution on the fiscal year 2021 budget process. The Council's Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight met several times thereafter, developing conceptual recommendations for presentation to the Honorable Town Council for their review and adoption. At the March 10th Town Council meeting, the Honorable Council adopted 28 conceptual recommendations on the fiscal year 21 to 25 CIP. One of the conceptual recommendations reads in part as follows: "Proceed with the school department's fiscal year 21 capital appropriation request of $2.8 million, which includes remodeling bathrooms at $120,000." So follow-up to that conceptual recommendation, in for additional background purposes, we did forward a November 23rd email correspondence from Lori E. Cable, the Director of Public Buildings, regarding the proposed remodeling of six middle school bathrooms. Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to bring forward Ms. Cable to kind of speak to the project, the need for it, the timeline. And then subsequent to Ms. Cable's presentation, I would come back, Mr. President, and complete the presentation on the proposed financing and the proposed transfer. Mr. President, Ms. Cable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll, Mr. President and councilors. Everyone can hear me. Is that correct? Great, so thank you again very much. We've seen this before. We've seen the remodeling of the bathrooms at the middle school for the last two years, and we've been doing about two to four every year or so. And what we're doing is, although we're making it look pretty, this isn't about making it look pretty. This really is about fixing the fixtures that are corroding right now, that are coming off the walls, that are starting to become unsafe. But not only that, but upgrading it to touchless toilets, touchless faucets, touchless soap dispensers. Really, we were doing this before COVID, but it's even more important for us to do it now that we are in COVID. Originally, when I put this forward, I was thinking that we were only going to get two to four bathrooms, but we did put this out to bid. And so we are going to be able to do six bathrooms. We've done eight already. Two of those eight were with the locker room, but four were separate from those lockers. So we got a total of eight. We're going to be doing six this time. We'll be doing four student bathrooms. Two of them are going to be neutral general. Two of them are a men's and a women's in the cafeteria. So four in the cafeteria. And then the two very large staff ones that are outside of the big gym, the main staff and the main office use. So we'll be doing those six. And I think this is a good thing for us to be doing at the middle school. And I think this is a good thing for us to be doing at the middle school. As Mr. Driscoll said, we're asking for, and Mr. Sedaris, we're asking for $103,000 to do this. And what we're hoping is, we do have a bid, so we're hoping that we can, under approval, really start to get the contract done as soon as possible and hopefully start working in the February timeframe to get this done as soon as possible. We are able to shut down the cafeteria while they're working because there's other bathrooms nearby, so we can do this while there are some students in school, especially because we're not in the cafeteria for lunches right now. So I think that about covers it, and I will answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As indicated, the correspondence that we had forwarded to you, it was, it had been the intent to bring forward a proposed loan order for the proposed remodeling of the six middle school bathrooms. At this time, monies are available to fund the project from debt retirement authorized unissued account as a result of the following items, issues, if you will. The first one is the receipt of a more favorable interest rate on the 15.6 million dollar, twenty-year general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2020 bonds that were issued in June of two thousand twenty. And also additionally, as you recall, back at the June twenty-third Town Council Meeting, there was utilization of monies that were available at that time in the fiscal year two thousand twenty debt retirement charterment account that reduced the permanent borrowing amounts for some of the related project items in the June twenty bond issue, which resulted in lower principal interest payments beginning in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Saying indicated at the last Town Council Meeting, utilization of unspent debt retirement account money for the acquisition of capital equipment items is consistent with the Honorable Town Council's ongoing budget policy guidelines to, to make expenditures of at least equal to seven and a half to eight percent of the operating budget in order to maintain and improve its infrastructure facilities and equipment. So given all of that, Mr. President, with Ms. Cable's presentation, the abilities to move forward with this project, respectively asked of proposed transfer, it's $103,000 that would be from the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one debt retirement authorized unissued to the fiscal year twenty-one transfer to Capital Project Schools. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on the transfer of funds?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $103,000 for the six middle school bathrooms.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Council Philtner?
Thank you. I just want to give a big thank you for diligence, and I'm excited that we're looking like we're moving forward and your continued enthusiasm and dealing with all our old buildings and maintenance needs in Watertown, Ms. Cable. And I know the staff is working really hard, and I hope that we can make good time and effort, even with COVID, given the situation of being able to work physically the way these are set up. And I appreciate you publicly sharing too. We always have questions and people don't always link to read the actual details of what is being done of your summary and, you know, on touchless and other things of the fixtures. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I also want to say thank you to Laurie and her team for continuing, especially at the middle school. Middle school is one school that I don't think is going to get renovated as quickly as our other schools are getting renovated. So we need to pay attention there. And I know we, what we looked at a capital, we approved a capital improvement program last night at the school committee level that included a lot more work at the middle school because it's the building that needs the attention that it's not going to get for a while, like the other schools. So seeing no other comments, I'd like to get a roll call, please.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
Council Canelis?
Yes.
Council Palomba?
Yes.
Council Picchirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Baze?
Yes.
Council Donato?
Yes.
Council Philtner?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item is HC, which is an order accepting a public use park and pathway located at Pleasant Street and Waltham Street, and authorizing the town manager to execute the acceptance of said public use park and pathway. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the town council. We had forwarded correspondence from Catherine Lloyd Klein from KP Law regarding the proposed grant of a public use park and pathway to the town and property located Pleasant Street and Waltham Street. As indicated in Ms. Klein's correspondence, Amstel Heritage Watertown LLC, the developer, has agreed to grant a public use park and pathway upon the property it owns at three eighty-five to three ninety-three Pleasant Street and upon an easement granted to the developer on adjacent property located sixteen Waltham Street. The public park will connect to the Greenway along the Charles River, as well as the sidewalks on both sides of Pleasant Street. The Department of Community Development and Planning had requested the easement for the development areas in support of the grant to the town. And at this point, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to, with your indulgence, bring forward Mr. Steve McGoon, the Community Development Planning Director and Assistant Town Manager, to kind of provide additional background on the proposed order before you this evening. Mr. President, Mr. McGoon?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, councilors. So this is a property at the corner of Pleasant, Rosedale and Waltham Street. Through the development review process with the planning board, the developer had committed to removing the billboard that you may recall was located on that corner, replace it with both stormwater features as well as landscaping and pedestrian access. And it wanted to make that, or wanted, the town wanted to be clear that that would have public access, as it does include pedestrian pathways. During the review process, the developer had also bought the, or purchased the adjacent property on Waltham Street, sixteen Waltham Street, in order to complete that improvement and make the pedestrian connections along Waltham Street, required a portion of that property as well. So prior to then selling that property to a third party, they completed an agreement for an easement to go across the corner of that property as well. So what you have before you tonight is the acceptance of that easement that includes both the corner property for Amstel partnership, as well as the adjoining property for pedestrian access.
Okay, can I get a motion on the easement?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the order accepting the public park easement located at Pleasant Street and Waltham Street and authorize the town manager to execute the document.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Council Philtner?
Thank you. I was, I went back and I was looking at the plans that were reviewed, you know, through the permitting process, just to try to clarify mine what the expectation is of that space. And it's, it's great to see this easement come forward. I was just wondering, is there potential for community garden there or any changes in the design, or is that set in stone? I mean, I wasn't, I'm not aware of those conversations. I know that the easement specifically says no bike parking, but it is right by the Greenway, but it says there'll be parking on Pleasant Street. So I don't want to confuse the easement himself. I just didn't know if Mr. McGoon might speak a little to the, the design and the use of the pocket park there.
For, Mr. President, with your indulgence, maybe it would make sense if I shared screen and showed a graphic of what that space would look like. So this is the property that we're talking about on the corner. As you can see, it has the pedestrian pathways that then link up to the sidewalk on Waltham Street and on Pleasant Street. It has some pretty significant landscaping, as well as a stormwater feature in, in this area. In terms of it being space for community gardens, I don't think it's really big enough to have any significant community gardens. And I think, you know, in terms of talking with groups like the community gardens, they want a pretty good confluence of, of plots in order to, you know, make it worth their while to administer. So I don't think this space would probably suit itself for that use.
Any other, are you okay, Lisa? Does that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions or comments at this point? Council Donato?
I'm sorry. I guess I froze up.
Yeah. Did your question get answered?
Uh, yeah, although, it's interesting, I mean, thinking of the community gardens weighing in on the positions as a group, I was even just thinking as, you know, the new residents themselves having potential garden space. And I'm not advocating per se, I just, I guess, maybe it's something to think about in future developments around flexibility near the river. And I mean, is there just concern about bike litter there? I was just curious why it said no bike parking, or is it just, I wouldn't be sure bikes are parked elsewhere because you're right at the Greenway? Or, sorry, I'm not fully informed with all the conversations around this development.
Yeah, Mr. President, through you, you know, the idea of bicycles riding through there, it's, it's obviously a pedestrian sidewalk, so it wouldn't be appropriate for bicycles to ride through there. And there are adjacent bicycle facilities that would allow for that in that corridor. So that, that was the general sense there. There are also facilities for bike parking associated with the river corridor and, and that park system as well.
Thank you very much.
I know Council Woodland was going to weigh in, but I got to wait till, I had, I had recognized Council Donato first, and then I'll get to you, Council Woodland. Council Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McGoon, did you say, is the parcel on Waltham Street owned by a different but related company to the, the developer on Pleasant Street?
So the developer on Pleasant Street purchased the property on Waltham Street and negotiated with the town regarding the access along Waltham Street. Then subsequent to that, they sold the property to another entity who owns it now with the agreement and arrangement that they would grant the easement. So the easement is actually from both properties, two different property owners.
Okay. The, the easement that's in front of us tonight is from both?
Yes. So if you...
I'm sorry?
If you, again, I'll share my screen again. And this portion of the property here, which fronts Waltham Street, is actually owned and part of the single family property to this side. And then this portion of the property is actually part of the Amstel property. So easement actually covers both.
Right, but the, the, the grantor of the easement is only the developer on Pleasant Street. So my, I'm certainly in, in support of this, but my concern is that the developer is only the holder of an easement for the property on Waltham Street. So I don't understand what right the developer on Pleasant Street would have to grant an easement over the land of another entity. It seems to me that if we want to be sure that the town can enjoy these rights in perpetuity, that we would also want the owner of the property on Waltham Street to join in the...
The, the arrangement with the adjoining property owner was, was made prior to the sale. So Amstel acquired the easement for both property or acquired the easement on their property before they sold it to the third entity. And the, or attorneys, KP Law, seemed comfortable with that arrangement, that this easement for this portion of the property on Waltham Street was granted or were held aside by Amstel when they sold the property to the third party.
Yeah, I certainly agree that Amstel has an interest in the Waltham Street property by virtue of the easement bets referenced in the grant of easement we're discussing tonight. I've read through that separate easement, and I just don't see where in that document it grants Amstel the right to grant further easements. And the way I look at it is, I'm thinking about if I grant my neighbor the right to go over my driveway to get to their backyard, and then at some later point in time, my neighbor decides they're going to grant the right to a third person, or a third party to go over my driveway to get to, you know, some other location. I just don't see how the developer, in this case, has the legal right to grant an easement over that quote unquote a butter easement area.
Yeah, and again, from my understanding is that that was the arrangement that Amstel had entered into when they sold the property. So to use your analogy, you had granted the right for your neighbor, or your neighbor's friend, whatever you want to characterize it, to use your ax, your driveway to access their backyard. And that was the nature of the easement that you granted. So that was understood at the time that was, that was granted. If, if there's a problem with that, I don't know, maybe I should ask Mr. Fair if, if he wants to weigh in.
Yeah, why don't we look at Attorney Fair? If you could maybe clarify some of this for us? By the way, Joe Fair is pinch hitting for Mark Rich this evening, so welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague Kitty Klein had reviewed, you know, the various underlying easement documents. And so, Mr. President, I don't know that I can speak specifically to all of the documents. It sounds from what Mr. McGoon is describing, though, that what transpired was that there was a condition on the sale of the property that the easement essentially continue on. So it's, in essence, that was granted at the time of, as a condition of the purchase, if I understand what Mr. McGoon was relaying.
Correct.
I guess my, my only concern is if there ends up being a fallout between the developer on Pleasant Street and the owner of the property on Waltham Street. The owner of the property on Waltham Street asserts at a later time that this easement was outside of the, the easement we're discussing tonight, was outside of the scope of the developer's rights within the previous grant of easement that was negotiated prior to the sale. I, I just, I don't want at some point in time, the owner of the Waltham Street parcel to come in and say, town no longer has the right to use the a butter easement area because the developer had never had a right to grant over that area. That's, that's only my concern. If Attorney Klein doesn't, didn't share those same concerns, and I suppose my, my concerns are unfounded. I just, that, that was something that was troubling me when I was reading through the grant of easement before us tonight, and then the other easement that is referenced in the grant.
I'm sorry, Council Woodland, did you want to add to some comments before? I'm sorry. And then Council Palomba?
No worries. So I was just going to add that there are bike racks up one block on Pleasant, and then across the street on Pleasant, and then up one block to the left on Pleasant as well. Most of the developers that are going in there are putting bike racks on their parcels. So even though it's not on this particular park, there are some within hop, skip and a jump in almost every direction.
Council Palomba?
Thank you. I, I'm, I just wonder whether, given Council Donato, I have a lot of great faith in Council Donato's legal understanding of these things. I'm wondering if it would be wise for him to put his concerns in writing and that we delay this until those concerns are reviewed by the town attorney, Ms. Klein, and they, and then he feels comfortable with, with the answers that she, she gives.
Something we can consider, yes. Let me get some more comments. Council Gannon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of comments and a question. So first, I love how the area has been improved in general. When I was growing up, we were nine, ten years old, walking to the Riverside Bowling Alley through the industrial area. There was a railroad that ran through the property on a twelve-foot-high embankment. And the only way to get from Rosedale Road to Pleasant Street was going underneath a railroad bridge, which had absolutely no sidewalks. So this is great improvement for Watertown, for this location. It's more pedestrian friendly. Couple of questions, will there be maybe a park bench or the signage to let folks know that this is a town of Watertown easement, so that folks would feel the ability to walk around? Question maybe for Steve?
Yes, through you, Mr. President. We can certainly have whatever signage would feel is appropriate. I, I do have some concerns about, you know, overproliferation of signs, but yeah, we'd certainly want to make sure that people knew that this was available for, for their use. We are also working on a directional signage program for the, for townwide. And, you know, places like this would also be a, a good example of someplace where we're directing people, letting them know that there's a pathway and a connection to get down to the river.
And follow up, Mr. President?
Yes, continue.
So, Mr. McGoon, so right across the street, there's the new development. It appears that there's a, a pathway leading into the Charles River Bike Path from Pleasant Street. Is that correct, Mr. McGoon?
Correct.
And in whose, is that also an easement allowing, I believe it was an easement long before, I think it was owned by the town for drainage at some point. And I see that it was, it is now a, a sidewalk leading into the bikeway. Is that, that's still available to Watertown residents to access the...
There, there are several places along Pleasant Street where there is access easements. The property, it's just been redeveloped across the street, yes, does have a pedestrian connection with easement through to Charles River Pathway.
So my only problem with the easements is I don't see any sign that allows folks that says this is okay to take your bike or walk or stroll or through this, through this land. So I would like to see at any opening that is open to, you know, anyone to pass through, I'd like to see a sign from the town Watertown that states that this is okay to enter, because I don't want folks walking out.
Counselor, I appreciate your comments, but unfortunately, that's not on our agenda this evening. We're talking about an easement. So I apologize, and your point is well taken, and I'm sure Steve heard it. That we're talking about an easement. So I apologize. And your point is well taken, and I'm sure Steve heard it. But I don't want to go continue down that path. What I'd like to do at this point is ask for a motion to continue this or to table this until our next meeting. Because I believe Counselor Donato's concerns are significant, and I think we should get some more clarification.
Also, Mr. President, I would, I'll make a motion that we table this to the next meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Counselor Donato.
You know, I I just want to apologize for not bringing this to the forefront beforehand. But where it's a document referenced in another document, I I didn't get a chance to review it in time to submit a question. Apologize for the.
No apology necessary. Counselor Felton.
Well, I was just, I and I think I'm answering your own question, but the easement wasn't brought before us before because of the change in ownership post permitting hearings with the planning board is my understanding.
Through you, Mr. President. So the easement wouldn't come to you until we were ready to execute that. At this point, it wouldn't have made sense for us to come forward with an easement on the adjoining property without this easement and the project not having come long far enough. So the reason easements before you now is because the projects progress far enough that they're ready to finalize documents like easements. And to Counselor Donato's point, I I don't think it's does any great harm to delay to make sure we get those questions answered and make everybody comfortable with it. So no great rush.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Canelus.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Fel- Felton. Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, and this was brought up at the last meeting by Counselor Palomba. And it's a referral to the Committee on Education and School System Matters to address recent incidents of racism in the Watertown Public Schools. Counselor Palomba.
Thank you. First off, I I just wanted to read what I had written in preparation for this. But this it it nowhere, it pales in comparison to the eloquent statement that Counselor President Sedaris produced earlier. But I do want to at least read what I put forth. Recent local news headlines into incidents of online and in-person race-based harassment of a student at the middle school. In addition, the Watertown School Department recently hosted a community-wide Zoom meeting to discuss the issue of racism and racial-based bullying. At one point, nearly 160 individuals participated in the meeting. During this meeting, parents spoke about incidents of racism experienced by their children and about students not feeling safe at school. In addition, residents and parents wondered aloud what steps the district takes when a student reports that he or she is a victim of racism, of a racist slur or act. Attendees also asked how to, how are students being held accountable if they are a source of a racist act or racial-based harassment? Watertown parents who have children in Watertown schools have approached me to ask what the town council is doing about issues of racism in Watertown Public Schools. Therefore, I would like to make a referral to the Community Committee on Education and School Matters to discuss what the protocol is when a student reports racial-based harassment and how is a student held accountable if he or she is responsible for the harassment? As well as as what steps the Watertown School District is taking to address racism? And how can the town council assist the district in their efforts? And that's why I reason I put forth the referral.
Thank you, Counselor. Before I ask for a second, as you are aware, everyone is aware that the town attorney last at the last meeting had some concerns. I have a couple of minor minor edits. If you would accept them as a friendly amendment, I'd like to read them. If you don't mind, Counselor Palomba.
Of course.
The first sentence, where it says recent local news, I'd like to change that to recent local media outlets highlighted instead of incidents, reports. And then down further where it says during this meeting, parents spoke about incidents of racism. And instead of experience, I would say reported. And then in the last paragraph, committee on education and school, it's actually school system matters. And then when a student reports racial-based harassment, I remove the and and it says, how is a student? How is a student held accountable if he or she is responsible for the harassment? And and I removed as well as and then put, so it reads, if he or she is responsible for the harassment, what steps the school district is taking to address racism? Now the town council can assist the district in their efforts. So I'm I'm before I ask for a second, I'm wondering, Counselor, if you're okay with those minor edits.
I'm completely okay with the edits and I appreciate them. And and you're also correcting my my error. Thank you.
I'm not correcting, I'm just trying to.
Yes, I'm completely accept the accept the amendments.
Can I get a second to bring this on the floor?
Mr. President, but that's not what the actual referrals says. It says refer to the Committee on Education and School System Matters to address incidents of recent incidents of racism in Watertown Public Schools. So is that that's the language that's posted for the motion? Is that going to change now?
Well, I I would suggest that, yes. Attorney Fair, under under what's listed in the the agenda, is this acceptable?
So at this point, this is just a referral to the Committee on Education to address issues. I I don't know that the revised, whether it's in its original state or it's revised, really changes really what what the posting, the agenda posting item was and what ultimately is being referred. So what's being referred, as I understand from what was read, is that a referral to the Committee on Education and School System Matters to discuss, you know, the protocols, how is a student held accountable and what steps they're taking, the school district is taking to address and how the council can assist. I don't see that as really being inconsistent with what was posted for the agenda item, which speaks to to address recent incidents of racism. This is a shorthand form, but it's still a referral to that committee to address those types of incidents and and issues.
Okay, it's, thank you, Mr. Fair. Normally, the language you vote on is what actually is in the agenda. But so I will, so I will second the language that was modified by Counselor President Sedaris as the the actual referral.
Is there a discussion? Counselor Woodland.
I'm sorry, am I just reading it, that reading it all again as amended? I think I might have missed something.
And can someone mute? Because it's really hard to understand.
Okay, let me let me read this if you if you don't mind. Recent local media outlets highlighted reports of an online and in-person race-based harassment of a student at the middle school. In addition, the Watertown School Department recently hosted a community-wide Zoom meeting to discuss the issue of racism and racially-based bullying. At one point, nearly 160 individuals participated in the Zoom meeting. During this meeting, parents spoke about incidents of racism reported by their children and about students not feeling safe at school. In addition, residents and parents wondered aloud what steps the district takes when a student reports that he or she, she or he is a victim of a racist slur racist slur or act. Attendees also asked how are students held accountable if they are the source of a racist act racial-based harassment? Watertown parents who have children in Watertown schools have approached me to ask what the town council is doing about the issues of racism in Watertown Public Schools. Therefore, I would like to make a referral to the Committee on Education and School System Matters to discuss what the protocol is when a student reports racial-based harassment, how a student is held accountable, and if he or she is responsible for the harassment. And what steps the Watertown School District is taking to address racism? And how can the town council assist the district in their efforts? So that's what we're voting on. Is there any other comments? Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just had a question with regarding the wording. So as a chair of that committee, I just want to know that the topic is on racial harassment, racial discrimination, bullying? Or could the bullying incidents be include anything from sexual harassment, intellectual disability harassment, gender-based discrimination? Or is it solely racially based as a charge to the committee?
I'm going to say that Counselor Palomba, if you can weigh in, and then I'll weigh in, Counselor.
Personally, I personally, I specifically did not include bullying in this because I I didn't have a because the parents who approached me did not talk about bullying. They talked about racial-based harassment. And so that in the final paragraph, the Counselor President Sedaris read, it is does not mention bullying.
Yeah, and I don't think it includes any of the other items that we're talking about here. And in the conversation that I had with the superintendent, she was kind of comfortable with this approach because this is what they're all working on and none of the other things at this point. Again, I'm not going to speak for anybody here. They may not be as big of a problem as this. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Can I get a roll call on the referral, please?
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelus.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor, for bringing that to this. The Counselor, did you have a question?
Just a comment. I would I'd appreciate you clarifying and refining that the referral. Thank you very much.
Any other new business to come before the council? Counselor Picciarelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So regarding the the speaker Rebecca Kerr, who spoke about the petition about Howe Park, Dog Park. I have spoken to her and I told her at the next meeting, I will be asking for a referral to the Parks and Recreation Committee to address issues raised about Howe Park. So I just wanted to get that in here as new business.
Thank you. Is there any other new business this evening? Communications from the town manager. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the town council have got two items. One of them is earlier today, Governor Baker announced that effective Sunday, December 13th, that all communities in Massachusetts will return to step one of Phase Three of the Commonwealth's reopening plan. This will reduce indoor capacities across a broad range of sectors of the economy and tighten several other workplace restrictions. The Baker-Polito administration announced a rollback to respond to respond to an increase in the new COVID-19 infections and hospitalizations since the Thanksgiving holiday that is straining the healthcare system in the Commonwealth. We'll have further details in this Friday, December 11th COVID-19 update. And then on a second item, I wanted to talk about the town hall, if you will. There's still, again, is open for by appointment only, but in observance of Christmas Day, the town hall will close at noon on Thursday, December 24, will be closed on Friday, December 25. And then the following week in observance of New Year's Day, the town hall will close on noon on Thursday, December 31, will be closed Friday, January 1, 2021. And certainly on that note, Mr. President, members of the council certainly are wishing everyone on the Zoom meeting tonight and everyone in our community a safe holiday season. And certainly, I think everyone is wishing and hoping for that 2021 will be a happy, healthy New Year, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other, no more to communicate, request for information, any requests for information? Seeing none, announcements, any announcements this evening? Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, well, just one thing about business. A lot of people are asking why we have so many roll calls. I don't know if we speak to that. And my understanding is because we're trying to be transparent and kind of required by Zoom and the guidance of the state to do that on our votes.
You are correct. It is a state mandate. We went to Zoom, we have to, everything has to be a roll call.
And the other is, I just want to announce that tomorrow night is Planning Board at 7:00 PM. And 20224 Pressed it is coming forward to Planning Board. I'm sorry, I didn't say Arsenal Street for request for changing their original special permit that was granted. And I don't know if Mr. McGoon is still on the call. It's difficult to find the recordings still of the community meetings that were held around that project. And I don't know if he could announce it or if it goes on a news flash for the town website. It would be greatly appreciated for the public to be able to find that information before tomorrow night at 7 o'clock via Zoom. Thank you.
The the minutes of those community meetings should be attached to the project file, which you can find through a community development planning website. I will check first thing in the morning, make sure that's the case. We could certainly send out a notify me with a link to that if you'd like to the planning and zoning notify me list. That would help.
Thank you. I I appreciate, I know there are minutes, but the the recordings that were made on the community meetings for all these projects are difficult to find, I guess, because they're not they're being held, VHB has been facilitating them versus cable access. So just a plea out there to, because if you look at petitioning cases, it says under construction. So it's just still a little difficult to find on the planning website the active cases coming before the boards.
So is is what you're looking for, just to clarify, the recording of the meeting, not the meeting minutes? Yeah, and and for those community meetings, which are developer meetings, we don't necessarily require that they be recorded. We do require that they produce minutes and produce those minutes and provide them to the community. Yeah, certainly, we make recordings available if we have them. I can certainly inquire if if they're available.
Counselor Canelus.
Thank you. On December the 21st at 6:30 PM, there will be a virtual community meeting to view proposed plans for 705 Monopren Street and 64 Grove Street, which is the former site of Tufts Health Plan. And the information is available on the town website. And I've also sent out the information to East Enders who who are in my contact list. Thank you.
Counselor Baze.
Thanks. Also, on December 21st, that meeting wasn't on the agenda when I scheduled this. The first Personnel and Town Organization meeting on the referral to look at equity and diversity and employment in Watertown is going to be held. And I hope people can attend. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I just want to take the opportunity, two things here. First, I want to echo the town manager and wish everyone a happy and safe and healthy holiday season and looking forward to kicking 2020 in the rear and moving forward in 2021. And I want to take this opportunity, it's been a long time since I've said something, and I know the manager puts out a COVID memo pretty much every week. You heard the manager tell us about what the governor did today. The coronavirus is not going away. The coronavirus is not going away, and we need to remain vigilant, we need to remain alert, and we need to follow the guidelines. And I'm just asking that if everyone, please, you know, follow the guidelines that are put in place, so we can all enjoy a healthy and safe New Year, and it looks like there's some positive news, but let's all, please, pay attention to the rules, wear the mask, social distance, and try to, you know, keep within your own inner circle, if you possibly can. I don't mean to sound like a public service announcement, but I think it's important that we mention things like that, because the health of our community is very, very important, and the health of our families and our friends is also very important. Public forum, Counselor Felton, another announcement. Counselor Felton?
Thank you. I just, on that note, you're reminding me, because here it is, December, just a shout out of thanks to all our public health and public safety officials, who I never get, you know, enough thanks for, and I've said it before, but I know we're all very grateful for everything, staff and first responders, and everybody's doing to keep us safe.
Echo that. Public forum, any member of the public wish to be heard? I'm going to recognize Libby Shaw.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to put in a quick word to say that we have a fantastic new tree warden, I can't tell you how wonderful we feel about Watertown's choice. He's really terrific, he's doing an amazing job, he's already, he just landed in September, and he's already, in the fall planting, planted 92 trees, which is really wonderful. I also want to say that we have a fantastic citizenry on, on the best of Ken Woodland Trees for Watertown, did an outreach to invite people to request trees, public shade trees, and we had a really spectacular response so far, with there's, I think, over 200 people who have requested trees online, and another 70 have sent in postcards. This, this is a really wonderful show of how important replacing the green canopy that we're losing hand over foot in Watertown is to Watertown's citizens. And I do need to mention that the current cost of planting a tree well and, and making sure it's taken care of for its critical first couple of years is on the order of $600 per tree. The, the goal of the town, I think, in establishing the 100,000 for tree planting each year, and, and other green things planting, was to get something on the order of 200 and upwards trees planted per year. At $600 a tree, that works out to something like 167 trees. So I just want to put in a word that we, that we really should be thinking about augmenting that tree planting budget in future years. But we have a really excellent tree warden, he's very responsive, and we have wonderful citizenry who are really invested in getting new trees.
Thank you, Libby. I'm just going to add and say, good things come to those who wait, and I know this was a long wait, and I also was very pleased to see that early on the job, on November 11th holiday, the tree warden was hosting a Zoom meeting. So thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wish to be heard? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Sedaris?
Yes, Mary, did you raise your hand, please?
I did.
Okay, no, anyway, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm recognizing you.
Thank you very much. Mary Russo, 201 Boylston Street, Watertown. President Sedaris, your proclamation is nice. Your proclamation states allegations. This word seems to minimize the young 13-year-old middle school student that was given only one minute to speak at the Superintendent Galston's farm. It took tremendous courage, and I say this in a respectful and positive way, so I hope you're hearing it that way. She has been ignored since February, threatened, and other students, staff, and faculty have also been ignored for a very long time. President Sedaris, you mentioned 1630, Watertown is very diverse, but this young lady was ignored. She had tremendous courage to take a stand, not allegations. She was ignored until it was publicized through media. This has happened over and over. Many students, parents, and employees have dealt with this until we have the courage to speak up. This young lady should not have been ignored by the adults. That, ignoring her instead of protecting her, I personally have reported this behavior, and nothing was done, it was ignored. There has been no tolerance for this behavior on my part. I don't think anyone can tolerate this behavior. And my last question would be, hopefully you can answer it, President Sedaris, how many years, I thought every two years, it seems to be outdated by eight years, that the bullying, racism, and by DESI is recommended to be updated? And does racism and bullying, hate crimes, get reported to DESI? I respectfully thank you for your input and your proclamation, but I think that one word should be removed. That's just my opinion as a retired teacher. I think it seems to minimize by putting the word allegations.
Thank you very much, Mary, and I will forward your comments on reporting to this appropriate people in the school department, and we will try to get those answers for you.
President Sedaris, one more thing.
No, Mary, your time is up, thank you.
Under two minutes, one more.
No, it's been more than two minutes. Mary, I'm sorry. Jackie Van Lewen?
Thank you. I have similar feelings as the last speaker, I really appreciate the statement, and it's a strong statement, and it needs to be out there, and the town needs to hear it, and I think it's really good, but I think the work of upsetting some people and holding people accountable and really facing this is a whole different thing. And, you know, as a community member, I hope to be a part of the solution, but I really hope the town council also does some real inner work to kind of look at, well, what have we known and not dealt with, and what can we do to increase accountability? I happen to know from a friend who spent a lot of time in the middle school that the bathrooms had horrible racist anti-Semitic graffiti, and it was a constant job to clean it. So right there, that's something like, why, why wasn't that? You know, that alone tells you that there is a major cultural problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in public? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelus?
Yes.
Counselor Palumba?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you all, and have a good evening.
Good night, happy holidays.
Same to you.
Happy holidays.